All right, I want to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for Community Unit District 186. Mrs. Hines, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bane?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Door?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Here.
Mr. Rungy?
Here. Next item is the Fledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Sunny, will you be so kind as to leave us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. I understand we do have one correction.
Just a minor one. Item number seven on new business, just changing the wording to authorizing, authorization about forbid for the chiller at Murphy'sboro High School.
That's it?
That's it.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the consent agenda, which consists of District 186 regular board meeting minutes dated March the 16th, 2021, tri-county regular board meeting minutes dated March the 17th, 2021, tri-county bills for April 2020, applications and reports. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is the approval of District 186 bills for April 2020. I'll entertain a motion unless there are questions from the board.
I have a question. The AMW plumbing, so is the tower, everything, that's final pay, the HVAC?
Final pay for the pulling tower. What page?
That's the first page.
Yeah, final pay, that's the final payment, that's pay number five for the middle school, HPC, Phase Three.
Okay.
I don't know where their final on that project.
Four rooms at a time there.
I saw the five and the five, and I was like, doesn't mean that's final too?
No.
I was like, what?
No.
Any other questions from the board? Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the District 186 bills.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number seven is communications. Do we have any?
We do, we have six. The first one is from Diane. Mr. Ellemeyer, will you help me with the pronunciation?
Lazorchak.
Lazorchak. To the Murphy'sboro CUSD 186 Board of Education, this letter is to inform you that I would like to retire from my position of math teacher at the Murphy'sboro High School in four years, which would be the end of 24, 25 school year. I love working at Murphy'sboro High School, and I am so proud of the progress we have made, both at the high school and in the math department while I have been here. We have an amazing team that continues to strive to make MHS the best that it can be. I would also like to commend our Superintendent at Board of Education and Administration for all the preparation and work done during the months of the pandemic to keep everyone as safe as possible. We have done a great job managing this monumental task, and I am proud. Thank you for making this a great place to work. Sincerely, Diana Lazorchak.
The Administration supports that recommendation.
I'll entertain a motion to approve their recommendations.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next one's from Stephanie Uzle. Dear Mr. Ellemeyer, please accept this letter as my official resignation from my position as a secondary science educator. My last day of employment will be at the end of the 2020-2021 school year. After careful consideration, I have made the decision to focus on my family's needs and will be relocating to outside of the area. I truly cannot say enough wonderful things about Murphy'sboro High School. Since my first day, I have been thankful for the welcoming environment that you and your faculty and staff have provided. The last years have been quite eventful, but nonetheless absolutely memorable. Here I have found a community intent on inspiring and caring for the well-being of their students. I discovered an amazing passion among the teachers at MHS who hold a steadfast commitment to the success of each student. The heart and soul of Murphy'sboro High School will remain with me and my teaching practices. I am truly honored to have been a part of this school. I want to thank you for taking a chance on first year's teacher and for the opportunities of professional development that you have provided. With the challenges that our school faced in the last few years, the experiences I have gained are beyond measurable. Sincerely, Stephanie Uzle.
The, woefully, we recommend the acceptance of that letter.
I'll entertain a motion to approve their recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next one is from Alex Hiller. Dear Dr. Evers and the Board of Education, I recently got accepted and started my journey to obtain a master's degree in elementary education at the University of Mississippi in January of 2021. I decided to go back to school to learn new information and apply new concepts into my first grade classroom. I also plan to share the information I learned from obtaining this degree with my first grade team. My goal has always been to go back to school after I've had a few years of teaching experience under my belt. I applied and was accepted fairly quickly, so I figured now's the perfect time. I'm asking for a step in my pay after the completion. My anticipated graduation date is October of 2021. Sincerely, Alex Hiller.
The Administration supports that recommendation.
I'll entertain a motion to approve their recommendation.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This one is from Jeremy Marshall. Dear Mr. Navara, please accept this letter as a notice of my resignation from my position as Assistant Cross Country Coach. It was a wonderful experience working with Mr. Ellemeyer and the cross-country athletes this year. This being my first year teaching and coaching at Murphy'sboro High School, it was a fantastic way to start the school year. I thoroughly enjoyed getting to know our cross-country athletes and watching them grow this past season. It was a true pleasure to get the opportunity to be their coach. I now look forward to focusing my time towards our baseball program here at the high school. Mr. Navara, thank you again for the opportunity to be the Assistant Cross Country Coach. I know that the program is in good hands, and I look forward to seeing those athletes and the program continue to grow. You can email me at any time or call if you need help. Sincerely, Jeremy Marshall.
The Administration approves, or makes my recommendation to approve that.
I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next one's from Jordan Ellis. Dear Mr. Keener, please accept this letter as my formal notification that I will be resigning from my position as MMS Baseball Assistant Coach. Thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to continuing to work with our athletes at the high school level. Thank you, Jordan Ellis.
The Administration supports that recommendation.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next one's from Christopher Gerald's. Key Club Faculty Advisor at MHS. Dear Mr. Ellemeyer and School Board, please accept this letter as a formal resignation that I will be leaving my position as the MHS Faculty Key Club Advisor effective May 18th, 2021. I have spent three wonderful and rewarding years in this position. I can honestly say I will miss serving in this capacity greatly. However, I am unable to continue my duties due to other family, city, and church commitments. I do believe I have served in this capacity well. I have brought many new ideas to the Key Club in the past three years, a new trophy case, additional technology in the auditorium and communication strategies. I want to thank you all so much for the opportunity to serve our students, school, and community. I will most certainly provide assistance in the upcoming transition. Sincerely, Christopher Gerald's.
The Administration supports that recommendation.
I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That was it?
Yes.
Item number eight is fishbowl items, and I think we had a couple.
Do. This one's from Daryl Young. MHS teacher Stacy Tebb recently had her work cited in a published academic article, "Sharing Hidden Histories: The Ex-Archaeology at Miller Grove, The Free African-American Community in Southern Illinois", authored by Kaylee Sharp, Mary McCorvey, and Mark Wagner. Ms. Tebb exemplifies the importance of participating in research and scholarship while bringing rich experience and expertise to the classroom. Congratulations to Ms. Tebb.
I actually have two. This one's, fourth grade teachers and students would like to give a big shout out to our kindergarten teammates and students for all their love, support, and treats as they provided us during the state testing. Our students truly appreciated the extra attention and positivity that they provided during our testing time. Thanks for everything, the fourth grade teachers. This is coming from the high school, the music department. This year, the high school concert choir had eight members make the Illinois Music Education Association District Choir. The state only takes those additions and chooses from the very best in Illinois to make a state choir. Benjamin Behringer was selected to the Illinois Music Educators Association All-State Choir. This honor is given to very few students in the state of Illinois. It is the first music student from Murphy'sboro to be selected since 2015. He is also the first sophomore from Murphy to have ever been selected. And this is coming from Jessica White.
Okay. Item number nine is the Freedom of Information Act request, and I don't think we have any. Item number 10 is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Are there any employee concerns? We thank you all for coming. We will now move into old business. First item under old business is the district financial and COVID update.
You can leave the pack.
Okay. Just briefly, financial update. We've received all of our property taxes, interest on the final sale, and I usually try to budget close to 99%, and we received a little bit more than that. So it was a good year for property tax collection, even though I think we didn't think it would be. Same with our state and federal funding continuing to come in as scheduled. And we have been working, Dr. Evers and Mr. Carrington, and I have been working on the ESER II and ESER III grants to get those, get those, the ESER II submitted and working on compiling the list of allowable costs for ESER III. So those are our big financial things right now.
And some of those, when we looked at prioritization, we're looking at what the building principals, as well as our department heads, Georgia Marshall, Darren Ripley, identify as pandemic-related hierarchy of needs. So some of the things that we'll be looking at are learning loss, keeping our class sizes smaller, creating outdoor learning structures for more open-walled learning opportunities, curriculum and material adoption and acquisition, sanitization for facilities. Everything from like the scrubbers and things have taken on a lot of wear and, more wear and tear this year, and that's a good thing. And, you know, also reduction of sharing of supplies. We looked at like even, you'll see on the agenda tonight, there's approval to go out forbid on musical instruments. That became something that you really had to think about when kids were trying different instruments or using things, you know, yes, you can switch your mouthpieces, but is that best practice during a pandemic? And so acquiring additional instruments and things like that. So we're going to be looking at across that broad spectrum of curriculum and our students' needs for this year and moving forward. So you'll see some unique items in this month and then several months on the sanitization. Some things like our pot scrubbers and our student dish scrubbing, some of them are very, very innovative. We want to make sure that we are getting the best, most thorough, safe everything in our schools. So you'll see lots and lots of different things, but curriculum instruction and learning loss will be the biggest, and keeping our class sizes small will be our biggest emphasis. And then some of those other unique things that, like the ability to give the middle school and the high school an outdoor learning classroom or lab. I know that I saw all fall, several teachers, one of our PE teachers was outside in the front yard almost every day, and one of our science teachers was between the science wing and the west wing in the large gym almost every day until the weather got cold. Now we'll have that opportunity to give learning classrooms that are outside, that are more open air. So just wanted you to know that when you start looking at some of these ESER, and ESER and CARES money are synonymous, okay? So it's the emergency school like relief app, and so CARES is the same. So when we use those, they'll be interchangeably. So CARES 1, 2, and 3, or ESER 1, 2, and 3, they're the same funds. But really, really trying to meet the needs and the prioritize, prioritize needs of the building level administrators having conversation with their staff and then our department heads too, so. And technology, I forgot, Mr. Carrington's done a lot with, you've done two weeks so far of interactive board demonstrations. So we have a digital grant that will provide 34 boards, but that will be just about a third of the overall need, so.
Thank you, Dr. Evers and Mrs. Bush. Item number two is the approval of the 2021-2022 calendar, which was distributed at the March meeting. And I will entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of that calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I want to once again thank, knowing that was on there, and I don't want to name any more names because I will forget them and not remember who they all were, but everybody that worked on that, thank you very much.
It was, it was a good, it was a very, very healthy process.
Good. Okay, the next item is we need to approve the canvassing of votes for the April 6th. This actually is the reorganization for the new board. The canvassing of votes from the April 6th, 2021 consolidated election. I will make a motion to approve the canvas of votes from the April 6th, 2021 consolidated election as presented, which provides that there were a total of 718 votes for Shannon Green, 758 votes for Troy Brown within the Murphy'sboro Township, 791 votes for Cheryl Brazel, and 35 votes for Kevin Bane from the remaining congressional townships. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I will ask the four members that were just elected if they will come forward and stand right over against this wall, and we will administer the ultimatum. If you've got your copy.
On the phone.
Gotcha. All right, I'll read it, and then you can repeat as a group. I, state your name, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Murphy'sboro Community Unit District 186 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Murphy'sboro Community Unit School District 186 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further swear that I shall respect taxpayers' interests. By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets, I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can only be made by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Murphy'sboro CUSD 186.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Murphy'sboro CUSD 186.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision of Murphy'sboro CUSD 186, and I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of our students and our community schools to advance the vision of Murphy'sboro CUSD 186, and I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Welcome to the board, all four of you. And at this time, I want to thank Kara and Annette for your service to this district and this board. And you are certainly free to stay for the rest of the meeting if you choose.
Or you can run out.
We'll take a moment.
I'll see you at the memorial or graduation.
Is it unanimous, Annette?
Unanimous. I got all of the votes. I know. See you guys.
I forgot to tell you, I passed around a neat little thing from the state superintendent of schools in my COVID update. It's the weekly letter done by our state superintendent of schools. One of our nurses, Ms. Leslie Van Zant, was on the cover of this week's article talking about by next rapid testing. And one of our fourth grade students, with the permission of her parent, allowed us to take a picture of that moment, so kind of the rapid testing program. And so they were talking about returning to school for other districts and things. So it's at your desk, just if you want to read it.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Bane, Mr. Green, welcome back. And Mrs. Brazel, welcome, our newest member to the board. Just, I want to say just two quick things to the board. We get our packets, the board packets, on Friday. So what I would ask is if you have questions on anything within the agenda, if you would ask those before the board meeting, I think we could save a lot of time at these board meetings by getting those questions answered up front. If you email the questions to Dr. Evers, I would ask that you would CC me on it, and if we feel that the entire board would like to see the answer, we wouldn't do that. So, and the other thing, I will also ask you to look at that packet and actually see what information you want in the packet. I personally feel there's a lot of information in the packet we don't need, and it's a waste of paper and time and et cetera. I'm going to give a couple of months because this is Mrs. Brazel's first meeting, so all of us have seen a few of the packets, and I think you all kind of know what I'm talking about. But I want to give Mrs. Brazel a couple of months to look it over and see what you would like to see in it too. So what we'll do is in the June meeting, please put that on the agenda, we'll decide what we want to pull out of there and what we actually want to keep, okay? Fair enough?
I had also talked to Dr. Evers. If you want a full packet assembled, you know, with all that included, I can keep it in a binder at my seat, and then if anybody wants to look at something, I'll have it.
Okay, the next item here is we need to appoint a president pro temp.
Move to appoint Mr. Rungy as president pro temp?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we need to appoint a secretary pro temp.
Who are the options?
I'm not sure you would find an option, quite frankly. So, I'm going to, I'm going to make, since we don't have any options. I'm going to move to appoint Mrs. Hines to serve as our secretary pro temp.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we need to establish the terms of office. And I will, I'm going to make a motion that we establish a two-year term for the Office of President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do we need to vote a vice president?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to vote a vice president?
That's coming down, not the pro temp. This was all just pro temp.
Oh, this is pro temp, sorry.
Now we're coming into permanent.
Fair enough. I didn't read.
All right, I will entertain nominations for board president to serve a two-year term.
Nominate Mr. Rungy for president.
Second.
There's no second name, but is there any other nominations? All right, then, hearing none, I will very graciously accept it and thank you. That will be declared unanimous. Yeah, just declare it closed and yes. I will now entertain nominations for board vice president to serve a term of two years. I will nominate Kevin Beavers.
Second.
Is there any, is there any other nominations? Then I declare the nomination to be closed. Mr. Beavers will be our vice president. And we need to take nominations for board secretary.
I would like to nominate Terry Hines.
Will you accept?
I'll second.
Any other nominations? I don't think so. I declare the nominations for the office closed, and Mrs. Hines, you are back.
What's the saying, though?
It was, yeah, what is the saying? Okay, and the last one is the Office of Treasurer, and Jan has served for the past 18 years. And unless anybody has a nomination, I would make the motion that we declare Jan as our treasurer for the Board of Education. Hearing none, then we will close that, and it will be determined to be a unanimous vote for the Office of Treasurer. Next item before we get into new business is we need to establish the regular meeting date, time, and place. And we have been meeting on the third Tuesday of every month at 6:30. On your packet, it does say 7 o'clock, but it is 6:30. And unless anybody wants to change that, then I would make that motion, and we leave it as such.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now let's move into new business. And this first two items are informational. It's the Student Parent Handbook and the Building Management Plans for 2021-2022. They were emailed to all the board members, and I'm assuming the new board members got that as well. So that will be on display until, now you've got the May meeting here. So that will be on display until May, at which point we will vote on that. If you have questions, please send them to Dr. Evers, and she will have plenty of time then to answer that. Item number three is the approval of the tuition-free students. I'm not going to read their names. I'm not going to read their names. You have them in your packet. The recommendation is to approve tuition-free students for the five that are listed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and those five, we welcome them into our district.
Just for a quick note on the building management and the student parent handbooks, since we'll be operating on a traditional calendar next year, those handbooks, like the return to school plan will sunset at the end of this, this school year, and we'll look at those building, building management plans and those parent-student handbooks having really the expectations for each attendance center. So just keep that in mind. You're not going to have those committees where we did return to school because we're, we've returned, we're succeeding, and we'll go to a five-day, more of a traditional approach to, to learning kind of what we had prior to the pandemic with whatever expectations IDPH and CDC have for what fall, fall learning will look like. But those plans will, those will be the plans that will be operational for each of the buildings. Okay? So when you have those questions, email them to me if you have anything in the handbooks, and I'll go to the building levels, okay?
Okay.
Okay, item number four is the renewal of the IHSA, and I'm sorry, thank you, Dr. Evers. The renewal of the IHSA membership for 2021, 2022. If the Board recalls for the past, I don't know how many years this has been a free membership to the IHSA, but due to COVID and the loss of the state basketball series, the football, state playoffs, et cetera, which is their revenue or the big revenue source for the IHSA, they are charging fees this year to all member schools. This is a three-year term. It's a sliding scale. The first year is twelve hundred and fifty, year number two is six hundred and twenty-five, and year number three is three hundred and thirteen. And the recommendation from administration is to approve the payment of those fees to be a member of the IHSA. And I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Second.
And all, go ahead, Mrs. Hines, let's, let's roll this.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mrs. Ivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carry. Item number five is the authorization for the middle school pavilion, which is enclosure number one. It's being paid for by Esser Grant. I will entertain a motion to approve that unless there are questions from the Board.
Just for clarification, this is going to be used for an open-air classroom, I'm assuming?
Correct. It will be on the football field in that corner where the concession stand used to be. And for the next item, what's that?
The northeast corner.
I'm back.
Northeast corner, yeah.
Yes.
There's picnic tables there now, great.
Correct. Okay, okay.
And the high school, for clarification, will be near the, nearest the science hallway, correct?
I, I, I do not know the.
On the south side of science, like science and math.
Between science and math? Am I going to have to build that dirt up?
Will it be seen from the road as you come in that side?
It will be, that's why we're, it's, it's a nicer looking space, yeah.
Okay.
With color matching and all that.
Any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the middle school pavilion per enclosure number one.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Ivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number six is the authorization for the high school pavilion, which was enclosure number two, and I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation unless there are questions from the Board.
I'll second.
I'm sorry for both of you, let me just back it up just real quick. We do have a difference in price. How much bigger is the high school one than the, the middle school, do we know?
The middle school is twenty-four by, I'm thinking forty.
Twenty-four by forty, and the high school is thirty by forty.
Forty by forty, yeah. They both have one-foot overhangs and things like that, which make them look a little bit sharper than a standard pole barn type pavilion.
Sure. Okay. I'll entertain, now let's go with the, the motion to approve.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Ivaldi?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Motion carries.
She likes pavilions, apparently.
No, I didn't answer appropriately a while ago, and I got a lot. She looks super excited about this.
Item number seven is the authorization to bid for the Murfreesboro High School chiller. And the recommendation is to go out for bids for that from administration, and I will entertain a motion to approve that unless there are questions from the Board.
What is, this will be the third chiller in three years or so.
This is, yeah, a large walk-in. It, it's just, we've done a lot with the remote food delivery, and there were rolling coolers. I mean, his, his cafeteria has coolers everywhere, and so this will help with summer school food delivery and then any type of delivery that we would have to do next year and just not having food in. I went just one time with the cafeteria staff, and they had food spread out.
So this is an additional one or a placement?
This is an additional one, it's going to take.
Okay, good, okay. I was wondering if we're having issues with lifespan on some of them.
No, they're, they're definitely all working and, and great. So we just need additional cooling space in one centralized cafeteria for kind of those unique needs because they have them spread across. And I know they were using for others, and yeah, the general a lot for, and sometimes the middle school depending on how the remote delivery. And hopefully we won't have anywhere near that scale, but we'll just be a very limited number of students who will be in remote next year. But it created tons and tons of new issues this year, and they, and we worked through them, but this will be a permanent additional cooler. So, and we will be working with our architect on the design specs for that too, so, for the cooler projects. Because there is some construction with that too.
Jake's trouble construction or internal?
Internal, we'll go into a classroom. An adjacent classroom.
Any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the authorization to bid the high school chiller.
So move.
And a second? Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. Ivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number eight is the amended 2020, 2021 budget, which was just handed out. And this is informational only, and we will take this up at the budget hearing in June.
Right. And there will probably be some tweaks to it between now and then, but the required thirty, we're way beyond the thirty days, but there isn't enough time to bring it to you at the May meeting without, you know, there's twenty-eight days.
Without the thirty days.
So yeah, didn't want to have a special meeting, so made as many changes as I could, including the sale of the bonds and some other big things. But with all the, the Esser grants and the money, and some things we might get included this year and some will get pushed to next year, I will probably be making a few tweaks to the budget to go out in your Board packet to get us a little closer to where we will be at the end of the year.
So the, the big things we should be looking for when we look at the revisions?
I think the biggest thing is the sale of the bonds. There, you know, I, I kind of went through line items and seeing, seeing things. Some things were surprises, some not, you know, save money. This year we haven't spent nearly as much money on substitutes, you know, because of the, the model and subs aren't available. So just, you know, a lot of things are, are being picked up by the, the CARES grant. Of course, they're all new expenses too, but things that we haven't spent money on that were kind of surprises to me, and, and then of course, all the additional expenses. So still trying to wrap our head around as far as, you know, textbooks and some of those things. What's going to go into the grant? What is going to be district expenses? So between, in the next six weeks, probably there will be some little tweaks here and there.
Okay, thank you. So you've got about a month and a half. If you've got other questions from the Board, just contact Mrs. Bush. Okay? Item number nine, we need to set the budget hearing to review the amended budget. And the recommendation from administration is for the June meeting, which is June the fifteenth, and that would be at six fifteen, so fifteen minutes before the regularly scheduled Board meeting. And I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number ten is the inter-agency agreement with Child and Family Connections, number twenty-four. This is an annual item that we approve every year. And the recommendation from administration is to approve the agreement, and I'll entertain a motion from the Board unless there are questions.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eleven is the approval of the high school math curriculum adoption, which is enclosure number three in your packet. And the recommendation from Mr. Allemeyer and Mrs. Sonny and the committee that they put together is that we approve the curriculum as presented. And I'll entertain a motion for that unless there are questions, and both of them are here.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. Ivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Mr. Allemeyer and Mrs. Sonny, please thank you and your committee for the work on this. We appreciate it.
We're excited about it, I mean, it's.
Good. That's the main thing. Are the kids, are the kids excited about it?
Oh, they are. The math department is definitely excited about the growth.
Good. All right, the next item is the authorization to bid the Murfreesboro Middle School Dishwashing Machine. This also is from the Esser Grant, and the recommendation from the Board, or from the administration is to go out for bids. I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation unless there are questions from the Board.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Let's roll that too, Mrs. Hines, I'm sorry. We rolled the other one, we should roll this one.
Mrs. Ivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. I'm going to roll the next one too, just to give you a heads up. Item number thirteen is the authorization to bid the band instruments, which is enclosure number four. And again, this is from an Esser grant, and the recommendation from administration is to go out and bid for band instruments. And I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation unless there are questions from the Board. And a second?
Second.
All right, Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Ivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. I'm going to do the same thing.
You're killing me.
I'm just trying to get consistent here with the, with the other ones, so. Item number fourteen is the authorization to bid equipment, which includes two walk-behind scrubbers, two carpet cleaners, and one ride-on scrubber. This again will be funded with the Esser grant, and the recommendation from administration is to go out for bids on this set equipment, and I'll entertain a motion to approve that unless there are questions from the Board.
Is that enough?
Those, that was what he identified his needs for, like the sanitation, like the equipment. So at this point, that's what he just said.
Now's the time to ask for more.
That's true.
Correct.
I would rather ask for more and cut it back. If, I mean, because these aren't cheap, and, and I'm saying with the band instruments, quite honestly, but.
They, they were very, they were very exhaustive in their approach. They, they did their, they were very specific about instrument brands and like the quantities. And they said, you know, this has been a twenty or thirty-year, you know, that most of them have been there. And so their, their goal is to hand those instruments down to our elementary school band, the fifth-grade band. And, and so they, they were very comfortable, comfortable in their scope. We do, I mean, we could, if he ends up saying that there's a need for it, we could potentially go out, out for one more at some point.
It may not be a bad question to ask him that anyway. Just, I think Mr. Brown's point is well taken.
All right. Well, when we're talking about this, this equipment, this equipment for cleaning and stuff too, just, I, we can approve this, but I, I, I feel like in the first round of CARES money, we may have left some money on the table because we didn't ask for enough. And I just, I don't want to be there again. I want to get everything that's due us rightfully, and, and not in two years say, well, I wish we would have asked for one more cleaning machine, you know?
We're, we will make sure that every penny, that is a lot to, it's an allocation for us, and so.
Okay, so, so we know.
They, they give us a set allocation.
Okay, good.
Whether it's Esser one, two, or three, or this digital equity, I mean, we have a PD grant. They'll give us specific allocations, so they set the formula, and we will, we will spend.
We know what money will fit in, we're not just applying to say, give us this, we know.
So at Esser three, we know that twenty-five percent will go for learning loss. So it'll be curriculum, there'll be class size, class size reduction, like teacher salaries and things like that. And then we'll, so all of those levels, there might be even additional vehicle, vehicles purchased because we put a lot of miles on the, the vans, like the vehicles. I mean, we're, we're probably going to have a two-vehicle request so that they can be used for anytime we need, like a COVID transportation or for, you know, some of our unique needs, so.
But to your point, Mr. Brown, there are some things that we didn't get in, in the first grant, the CARES money, the eight-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand allocation. Some of those things, like the additional bottle fill stations with the water fountains. But since we can go back to March thirteenth of twenty, we can write those into either the Esser two or the Esser three grant, those expenses, because those are, those are qualifying expenses. And we bought, we bought those, I think most of those were after July or in this fiscal year.
I think what I was thinking about more was the underestimates we made on hardware like Plexiglas, where we used much, much more than we anticipated.
Right, and that's all, we, I mean, we did, we did catch all the, I amended our budget just to move things around because there are some things that we didn't end up spending money on. The Chromebook cards, we, we thought we'd have to purchase a lot more of those, and we found that we didn't need those. The, the hotspots, the MiFi's, we didn't have to purchase those, those were given to us. So we had some savings there, and we could shift things around. I could, you know, catch the Plexiglas and some of those expenses. I originally thought we wouldn't have enough money.
Well, I think, I think last year we were just, I mean, we're flying by the seat of our pants. We had no idea. And now we have a year's worth of, of evidence on what is needed, so I think that helps tremendously.
So we learned that we overdid it on hand sanitizer. We have enough gallons.
What about toilet paper?
Toilet paper we're great on, and I would say the highest premium item is cabbie wipes. Like the Lysol wipes is everyone's, like, favorite request, so I mean.
Good.
That, but really, it, it was a, a team effort last year on that return to school plan that we were on every website known to man trying to get all those items. And then when we had a unique need, if we presented, we're so fortunate to have Darren Ripley and the skills that he has, because you could find something that might have been on, you know, like, oh, I saw this on Facebook, this would be a really, really safe thing for this specific student or his needs. And he could design it and build it, and, but you're right, we did, we, we ended up needing way more Plexiglas than ever, you know, but we learned that we could use different levels, like thickness of, of Plexiglas on the front and then thinner on the sides. It, it was really just, and we found out that shower curtains were.
And, and don't get me wrong, I'm not blaming or, or doing anything. I just, we're at the point where we're asking, and I, I just want to make sure that we're doing our best to ask for as much as possible here. And it sounds like we are. I'm satisfied with that.
With, with their allocation, we will spend out every penny. I mean, that is the absolute expectation of all three levels of CARE. And any, I mean, when they come up with a new one, when they, we submitted one probably, what, thirty minutes ago? So, and it was, how much, thirty-seven thousand?
The digital equity, hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
Yeah, and we just did that right before the meeting, and they said, oh, yeah, there's money, just fill this out. And we're like, okay. So that was thirty-four more for Mathian Board. So when you said you have over a hundred who've requested now, so that's a step in the right direction. So we'll get phase one, and then at Esser two and three, we can phase in the next.
Any, any other questions from the Board? Then I'll entertain the motion to approve the authorization to bid the equipment.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. The last item is the agreement for the athletic training services with Athletico and the recommendation is to approve the proposal of forty-three thousand five hundred. This is an increase from thirty-seven thousand from last year, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. And it's a one, it's a one-year.
It's a one-year agreement.
Agreement.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation unless there are questions from the board.
Do we have other options? I mean, did anybody else offer a bid?
In two thousand and eighteen, they were the only one who bid the, the board. And they're very satisfied. It's a local trainer who, who comes in. So they've been very satisfied with the services that have been provided by Athletico, so.
If I recall correctly, back in, in, in oh eight, it, not only was there only the one, it was tough getting the one at the time. And I think this is also during the time that we were actually using Dr. Corley, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah. So it was, it was tough to get.
It was. And I mean, it, the, the relationship was good, I will say that. We've been very happy with our relationship with them. Obviously, a fifteen percent increase isn't ideal, but I think they've, from what they, from the conversations that I had with them, they've had to go through and do a lot of deep dive into their financials and, and I think COVID has hurt them. Because they're not just athletic training, there are a lot of different rehabilitative services and things. And so I think they're trying to readjust in all ten areas that they-
Right. And they have a lot of their other services.
Trying to make up for other areas.
All those elective knee surgeries that were in that quarter, I mean.
It, it, but the relationship is very good. We feel safe with our students, our student athletes.